Much memory of my little sister was visiting.
That does sound a little.
Yeah, and she was like, you know, what happened to the town farm? And I think it's that whole Bear Hill name up here.
Well, I didn't know they didn't know it was far up as Bear Hill.
Into the woods, so.
But they know the woods. I mean, because remember that reservoir is.
So they don't know we got them on the road by what they were. That might be an asterisk because Bear Hill.
Yeah.
Oh, baby, baby. I love it.
She sees me. She's fine.
Jean, is there anyone here that we were waiting for? Anyone else that's coming that we're expecting? No, no, just in general. One eighty-five Grape Pond? Oh, one eighty-nine Willow Street Continuance. Is that maybe those folks in the back?
I don't know what it would have done. I think.
Oh, okay. All right. Give us a, Sean hasn't even, have you even met with anyone yet?
No.
I'll do it. I'll do that. I'll do it. I'll do it. I'll do it. I'll do it.
Well, technically, my. Yeah, I'll take one, actually.
Uh, no, thank you.
Yes, coming down.
Thank you.
Where do you get this, by the way?
Amazon, they come from Switzerland.
Oh, yeah?
Really good.
That one's ten francs right there.
It's like, it's like fifty dollars.
Yeah, so I've only been to Switzerland once, and it was for four hours. We had a layover in Zurich. And so we're like, okay, on our way back from Israel, we were going, we had a layover in Zurich. Like, all right, let's go to breakfast. We went to breakfast, me, Nathan, my son, and my brother. It was like eighty bucks for like just a normal breakfast. Like, it was insane. It was a beautiful city, but it's insane how expensive it was.
Well, buying beer, I mean, it's like fifteen dollars.
Yes.
Satirators.
Only I remember from beer lovers when I worked in the neighborhood, we had a meeting at some place. Sure, that was the most beautiful place we stood in Switzerland. It's like, we decided to go up and see Chamonix. You know, which is in the French Alps, the front side of it. And we came down at night, in the dark, and I was driving, you know, scared. No guardrails in the drive, no lights, switchback roads.
It is a, you just need to remember the scariest drive you've ever.
Go ahead.
Ready?
Just say hello to her.
I did. She says that. Yep.
She's on set?
Yep.
I was going, um, switchback. It was a boost down to the future. dope trails. Yeah. Then applause. I want applause, yeah.
Okay, ready?
Ready.
Call to order the June sixth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. Okay, uh, we will start with continued public hearings. One eighty-nine Willow Street has asked for a continuance. Is that right, Jean?
Yes, can we take a ten minutes first?
I guess we can.
Okay.
Everyone, are you here? Yeah, go ahead.
Yes. Kelly Comier.
Here.
Sean Kevlin.
Here.
Aton Goldberg.
Here.
John Simons.
Here.
Peter Boynton.
Hi.
And I guess I should read. Pursuant to chapter two of the Acts of two thousand twenty-three, this meeting of the North Andover Planning Board will be conducted in person and via remote means in accordance with applicable law. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and our parties with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, in-person attendance and members of the public and board members will be permitted. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting live may do so on their televisions by tuning to Comcast Channel Eight or Verizon Channel Twenty-six or online at www.northandoverkm.org. Every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time by technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the town and the Andover website an audio or video recording, transcript or other comprehensive record proceeding as soon as possible after the meeting. If the public would like to participate in public hearings but not attend the meeting in person, please email your question or comment prior to or during the meeting to Jean Enright at J E N R I G H T at northandoverma.gov. Question or comment will be read during the proceeding and responded to accordingly. Okay, and then for role, Kelly is participating remotely. Peter, John, Sean, and myself are participating in person. Okay, one eighty-nine Willow Street.
They requested a continuance today. They go before conservation on the fourteenth, and so they wanted to get some feedback from conservation before coming back to you on the twentieth.
Okay.
The only new information in the packet, because I received it today, there is information in the packet. The only new information is some correspondence between the building commissioner and the applicant in terms of the uses proposed.
Okay, so we'll continue that without taking further evidence until June twentieth, two thousand twenty-three. Continued public hearings, zero Turnpike Street, Middleton Farms LLC, application for site plan review special permit, Article Eight supplementary regulations, Part Three site plan review, and Article Ten administrative, administration one ninety-five, ten point seven, North Andover zoning bylaw. The applicant proposes redevelopment of the property consisting of the raising of all existing structures and construction of a one hundred sixty-seven thousand nine hundred thirty-three square foot industrial building that encompasses the town of North Andover and Middleton, the construction of a new access drive located in Middleton, the construction of all associated parking areas, stormwater structures, shared septic, uh, which is located in Middleton, and utility installations, and construction of fourteen thousand three hundred three square feet outdoor storage yard located in Middleton. The project is located within, in the I-one industrial zoning district. Jean, why don't you tell us, uh, it's been a while since this project's been in front of us. Why don't you tell us where we stand and what we may hear tonight?
Yep, so the public hearing for this application opened on November first, and the applicant has requested continuances since that date. The applicant has submitted responses to the site plan review, the stormwater management, and the zoning bylaw peer review comments. A response to the traffic impact assessment is still pending. The applicant will be in attendance tonight. They are, they'll provide an overview of their responses. They were only sent to peer review in the last week or so, and so we haven't, certainly haven't heard back yet, but they're under review. A revised site plan, which addresses many of the peer review comments, is included in your packet. Since it has been so long since the applicant has presented new information to the board, abutters were renoticed. The application is also before the Conservation Commission, but has been somewhat of a holden pattern there as well, awaiting peer review responses and input from the planning board.
Okay, have we received any, uh, public comments either in the interim since our last meeting or since you, since the renotice was sent out?
We have not. We had one abutter that had been calling periodically to see if it would be heard. He did not call this time, so he should have received the notice.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
So, good evening. Jill Mann here on behalf of the applicant here this evening is Chris Sporages from Williams and Sporages, the civil engineer. Chris is going to give you a broad overview of all, um, of the project, just to refresh everybody's recollection. As you know, this project is actually bifurcated by the town line between Middleton and, um, North Andover. We've been working with the town of North Ando, I apologize, with the town of Middleton with regard to the water connection, because as we had discussed before, the water connection would go through a water room in Middleton and then be shared with the, um, complete park, which would include a building located in, in, uh, North Andover. Recently, the town administrator's office had said that they think that there's a possibility of needing an intermunicipal agreement to be able to allow water to be used. I don't necessarily agree because of where the location of the water meter is, but if that's what the town administrator says, then that's, you know, basically what we need to do, and I, it's my understanding that both town administrators from both towns have been in communication. Just wanted to give you that update. Regardless of whether there is, um, a connection or not, though, we do have the ability to connect a potable water by, by basically drilling, drilling a well if we're told it's impossible. And then to provide, um, fire protection even still, either through the use of cisterns or through the use of, um, a municipal connection, because you don't need any kind of an agreement for emergency services. So as Jean had indicated, Ms. Enright, excuse me, had indicated, we did respond to the peer review engineer. We do have a pending response for the traffic. We had actually send out our traffic engineers again to do some recalculations and then to investigate some additional issues relative to that intersection, which I'm sure the board knows, has some, um, concerns from both the Middleton perspective as well as, um, North Andover. So we are addressing those, and if, um, I may ask the board, what we would like to do is bring our traffic engineer in so that he can answer any questions that the board may have. And I don't know if, if, um, the board would then also like your peer review traffic engineer at the same time. And if that's the case, then we'll coordinate with Ms. Enright to make sure both parties can be at the same meeting instead of just trying to trade paperwork just in case there are lingering comments we can just address.
So I would say it depends on, I mean, I guess I'd like the, the reports to be done first. And if, if our peer reviewer says, great, everything looks fine, I agree with it, then I don't really see the need to bring them in. If this, if there are more detailed questions or things that are brought up, then, then it would make sense to have them both. But I think let's get the paperwork and the reviews done and submitted, and once those are submitted, have them come in, and it would be great to hear from them.
And, um, that, we're anticipating that that'll all be wrapped up by the end of this month. As Ms. Enright had said, all the responses had gone out to the peer reviewer. It was probably two weeks ago, I think, maybe we, around there. But notwithstanding, we haven't had additional communication with, um, Peter Ellison from T E C, but Chris Sporages doesn't intend on calling him. We wanted to be able to come to this meeting, give you an overview. We knew we weren't going to be able to get comments back and then trade. But at this point, I think it might make sense to have Chris come up, just give you a broad overview, give you an understanding of, of, um, the big changes that were made, because one comment, I, I don't know if you remember, but one of the abutters or group of the abutters representing the condominium had asked us to put up a very large fence that would provide two things, you know, block visually, and then it would help with sound on the ground. So Chris is going to show you what we did. We substantially amended the landscaping plan in this area, and then we did add an eight-foot fence, which is something that we had been discussing with those abutters as well, and he'll just go through it with you. And then, um, we are hoping to not have to have any more continuances and to just keep coming, resolve, and then, um, be able to allow the board to just continue with the meeting and not have these large breaks ever again.
Can I, uh, so you mentioned that you were working on the, um, water issue with Middleton. Are you, are there any permits you're seeking from the town of Middleton? And if so, what are they in, and what stage is that in?
Exact same stage as you. So we appeared at their last meeting after a number of continuances, and we, we showed up last month at May twenty-seventh and basically gave them the same presentation that Chris is about to give you. And we are seeking from them a special permit for outdoor storage, a special permit to allow contractor, um, offices, because in Middleton you need a permit for that, and then site plan approval, and then obviously the order of conditions like we need from you, and then a stormwater permit is exactly what we need from you as well.
Okay.
In Middleton, it's before the zoning board of appeals.
Right.
Yeah, they, they, all, all permits, the only thing that really goes before, um, planning board in Middleton is subdivision approval.
Okay, yeah, it, it doesn't really matter who the special permit granting authority is, one, let's see, what, what permits we're speaking on. Okay, perfect.
Okay, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Chris, and if you have questions for me afterwards, I'll be in the background. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members. For the record, Chris Sporages, a civil engineer from the engineering and survey office of Williams and Sporages. And I'll just go through the plan very quickly to refresh everyone's memory about the property. It's a, a very large plan set at, with twenty-two sheets. So as Attorney Mann mentioned, uh, we have the town line between, uh, cuts the property in, in two pieces. And let me just highlight that real quick.
Can you also highlight where, uh, one fourteen is on the map, but just I can't see the scale from here. Thank you.
Sure, you're welcome. This is a, a very large scale at, uh, two-hundred scale. Uh, our locus is in the, is in the gray, and you can see the town line in green. Uh, one fourteen is that pink line, uh, and then the north arrow is, um, uh, up the upper left, pointing up in the upper left-hand corner. Uh, we, uh, abut the condominium development next door that Attorney Mann mentioned to the west. And then to the southwest and south, we, uh, abut the, uh, the state forest. And then over to the east and southeast, uh, we abut another small industrial park that has industrial contractor bays. And then there is a residential abutter, um, in Middleton with a single-family house, um, just to the east and southeast of us. Uh, let me flip over to the existing conditions plan. So on the Middleton side, uh, we have a smaller piece of land at about four point seven six acres. On the North Andover side, it's quite a bit larger, at just over seven acres of land. Uh, there's no frontage in the town of North Andover on this property. Our only frontage is on the Middleton side, and that's the, the red-orange color. Uh, and that's, uh, our frontage along, along the highway there.
I'm sorry, excuse me, can you just confirm that this is the second page of the PDF as well? I think it is, it's harder for me to tell.
Yes, it is. It's page two.
Okay.
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you.
Sure. Attorney Mann mentioned that we filed for a notice of intent, of course, with the North Ando, both North Andover and Middleton. There are very few wetland resources on the property. They're shown in the, um, in the lime-green color. There's an isolated wetland on the North Andover side in the, in the northwest section. So that's the isolated wetland in North Andover. And then, uh, in addition, there is a bordering vegetative wetland, uh, that exists where there is a drainage pipe that discharges towards the state park land. Uh, and that's a, a BBW along a channel that contains an intermittent stream. And so the buffer zones from those two areas come onto the property, which require us to file, uh, in both towns. The wetland lines have been previously confirmed in both towns as part of a, uh, ORAD process, uh, so those have been determined final. Other critical areas or things to note is that the wetland system that's to the south and southwest in the Harold Parker State Forest and where that pipe discharges is tributary to Emerson Brook Reservoir, which is, um, one of the, uh, public water supplies in the town of Middleton. And so that wetland system connects to some streams. The streams flow into Emerson Brook Reservoir. The town pumps some water out of there to their main reservoir, uh, which is known as Middleton Pond. Uh, and so because of that, um, this is considered, um, a critical area relative to stormwater management and things of that nature. Uh, in fact, uh, the state, uh, through their GIS program, keeps track of tributaries and, and setbacks from tributaries and have rule, has rules. We confirmed the limits of the tributaries with the gentleman from, uh, DEP very early on in the project so that we understood exactly where it begins and, and so that we know that, uh, where those buffers were so that we could stay outside of them, and if we did have any activities within them, that we were meeting the regulations. Of course, access to the property is exclusively via one fourteen, a state highway. We will require a state access permit.
So does that mean you're going to have to do a MEPA filing, too?
Uh, this property, uh, because it has greater than five acres of impervious surface, and we need a state permit, that being the state highway permit, it will require us to file an ENF, so, uh, we have that application, um, in the works as well. That's correct. Uh, for existing uses, uh, in Middleton, historically, it, this has been the home of Middleton Farm Supply, an outdoor storage, uh, outfit that provided things like silt fence, hay bales, and other farm supplies to various folks. They rented out, uh, rented space to, uh, people that stored all sorts of, uh, um, vehicles and trailers on the property historically. There was, uh, there's an existing single-family home on the property, uh, and now, uh, the property's being, a portion of the property is leased, uh, to a, um, a Peter Oil Company, and they park their vehicles, um, when they finish their deliveries at the end of the day. Uh, no fueling takes place on the property, um, in Middleton, uh, but it's just a, a truck storage area today. Now, for the proposed development, I'll just flip over to, um, sheet three, actually, uh, sheet four in the plan set. So this shows the proposed, uh, building, and, uh, there's a portion, the larger portion is in North Andover, uh, the smaller portion is in Middleton. In total, we're looking at approximately a hundred and sixty-seven nine hundred square feet. The footprint in the town of North Andover is a hundred and six thousand square feet, while the footprint in Middleton is only sixty-one thousand six hundred square feet. Uh, the uses, uh, that are proposed, um, are those that are allowed by the zoning bylaw, and Attorney Mann went through the proposed uses in the application. There's potential for, uh, R and D, uh, there's potential for, uh, office with storage attached, and those are outlined in the application in our parking table. Uh, in terms of parking spaces, uh, what we've proposed in the town of North Andover, uh, through our use table, uh, we've outlined all the required parking spaces. Uh, they total up to fifty-nine parking spaces, and we propose, uh, sixty-two. And the, um, the parking spaces are spread, uh, throughout the site. Uh, let me just, uh, go over the general circulation, and as I show you the circulation, I'll point out the parking spaces. So as we come in, uh, from one fourteen, you can see that we have a proposed, uh, a, a wide entrance, which allows tractor-trailer traffic to come in and out and make those churning movements, uh, without crossing over, uh, the yellow lines in the middle of the highway. Uh, and we have a complete circulation around, uh, around the entire property. And we have an inner, uh, parking field, uh, where, uh, we have most of the employee parking. Uh, that's in between, uh, the two buildings, if you will. The building is in a U shape with that, uh, brown outline. And you can see the parking field in the middle. Uh, that's where the, uh, the majority of the parking spaces are. On the North Andover side, uh, the building has a, a sidewalk, uh, in front of the entire, uh, eastern side of the building. And then along the northern side, uh, so that's, uh, for pedestrian access to various locations along the building. And then to the west, uh, you can see in the darker gray color is our, uh, loading dock area. Uh, we have pavement on the outside, but as we approach, uh, the loading dock areas, we're proposing to use concrete, poured-in-place concrete, uh, to, uh, better support, uh, tractor-trailers that may back up and do maneuvers, um, to hopefully save, uh, the park, uh, the pavement, uh, if you will, from getting, uh, beat up and chewed up over time. The, uh, the other parking spaces on the North Andover side, um, I'll just show them real quick. Uh, you can see them there. Uh, we, uh, and I'll go through this when I quickly review the, um, uh, the peer review responses. Uh, we were able to, to prove that, um, uh, fire safety vehicles of all sorts, shapes, and sizes, in addition to various truck sizes, all the way up to, to, uh, tractor-trailers, uh, can, uh, come into the site, uh, maneuver to the loading dock, uh, go back out, uh, and/or drive around, uh, the entire facility, uh, from North Andover and into Middleton. You can see all the, uh, the paved access goes around, completely around the perimeter of the structure. Attorney Mann mentioned on the, on the Middleton side, for your information, that we are seeking a couple of special permits. One of them is for outdoor storage, uh, and that outdoor storage area is the rectangular shape that you see in the southeastern portion of the Middleton property here. Uh, the use on the Middleton side will consist of contractor bays. Uh, the primary access, there'll be garage doors on both sides, uh, of the building, uh, so that folks can access, um, access the building on both sides. In terms of, uh, utilities that are, um, supporting the project and providing, um, uh, things like water, sewer, uh, gas, uh, that sort of thing. Let me flip over to the utilities plan real quick, and they're color-coded. So having met with the, uh, the, uh, fire, fire department officials, um, we received input, uh, from, uh, from the officials regarding placement of hydrants, and we have a network in the darker blue color. There is no, uh, existing water across the frontage of our property, or even the next one, uh, that, uh, can supply, uh, the necessary, uh, water for this building. And so we are extending it, the twelve, the existing twelve-inch water main from Rockaway Road, which is a little bit, uh, a few hundred feet down the road from, uh, beyond the plan, um, and then stopping it at our entrance and coming in. Uh, and, and this is a water supply from Middleton, is the way the project, uh, was submitted and proposed. Uh, and that water supply would come into the site and enter the building right in the front. Uh, that's domestic and fire. And then we have a network of hydrants. I believe there are, let's see, one, two, three, four, five hydrants, um, spread out throughout the site. Uh, those locations were selected by fire department officials. There is natural gas available, uh, on the highway, uh, on our side of the highway. That's the green line that you see there, uh, so the buildings will most likely be heated using natural gas. And then for sewer, or septic in this case, uh, the septic system is proposed in the town of Middleton. Uh, you can see it's the brown, uh, lines. It's a innovative alternative, uh, technology system, uh, known as Presby. And, uh, water, uh, wastewater will be, um, uh, run through septic tanks and then, uh, to pump chambers that will, uh, go to a sewer manhole, uh, that will then will allow the water to just flow by gravity into the leaching field. Uh, and so water and sewer back into the ground on, uh, the Middleton, uh, property side. Uh, the stormwater management system, of course, is designed in accordance with DEP's stormwater management regulations and, and ten standards. It consists primarily of infiltration, uh, what we refer to as best management practices or BMPs. And they're spread out throughout the site and capture varying amounts of roof and pavement. Uh, there's a very large underground infiltration system, and that's the lighter blue color on the west side in front of the loading dock area. Another longer rectangular shape in between, uh, the, the U shape of the building. And then a smaller one in the southeast corner on the Middleton side. So, uh, water is directed to various, uh, deep-some catch basins and then receives some additional pretreatment through some proprietary devices to knock out additional total suspended solids, at least to forty-four percent, uh, before discharging into the infiltration BMPs. Then we have, um, an open basin, uh, in the front of the property. There is a portion of the front of the property that flows towards one fourteen, and so we had to do something to capture that water. Uh, and so that's a infiltration basin that's to be maintained as, um, as a lawn, uh, type, uh, surface. And that has, um, a pretreatment, uh, the two little, uh, circles that you see on the north side. And then that has an overflow, uh, that eventually goes to a swale and works its way, uh, from northeast to southwest and discharges, uh, towards the, the rear, where eventually it'll meet the wetland system on, uh, the Harold Parker State Forest side of the, of the land. We have a, a lighting plan, uh, pretty basic, just to provide, um, safe lighting, uh, for folks coming in and out of the building at night. And then, as Attorney Mann mentioned, an extensive landscaping plan, which we've added to, um, s- since our previous public hearing, and I'll just flip to that page real quick.
What page number is that?
That's, uh, page fifteen.
Thank you.
Uh, so, uh, one of the concerns of the folks that live on the, um, uh, the multifamily development next door was, uh, visual screening, and so, um, uh, the property owner, um, agreed to provide an eight-foot-high privacy fence in addition, uh, to the evergreen screening, and so that privacy fence, I'll just highlight where that is. It's right along, runs right along the property line, uh, between, uh, the multifamily project and what we're proposing to do.
Do you mind also highlighting, I think, where the loading docks are and where the traffic pattern is to the loading docks in relation to that screening?
Sure, I'll, uh, highlight the, um, the concrete pads in front of the loading docks.
I appreciate you doing the highlighting, and it's very clear where your hand is moving. But once you've highlighted, we can barely see the line. It's just so thin.
Yeah, sure, I have, uh, I'll go for the black. Yeah, sure. I have a, I'll go for the black.
Thank you.
You need to be looking at the cam screen. It's showing up there.
Where are the trucks parked today? And I assume there's no fence, but just for clarification, is there any fence or screening there now, and where are the trucks parked today?
Sure. Are you referring to the Petro Oil trucks?
Yes. I'd imagine that a bunch of trucks often park in that area.
So the Petro Truck operation is strictly in Middleton. It is fenced with a chain-link fence, but it is, you can see it. It's not screened.
It's over there. Okay.
Chris, there was a number of tractor-trailers just stored on the property too, right? And that was throughout the whole center of there?
That's right. If you were to go into Google and pull up aerial images going back in time, it was historically a mess out here. Since our client purchased the property a couple of years back now, he's done an excellent job of getting rid of a lot of that stuff. A lot of the stockpiles of material, landscape materials that were on there have been removed, and that sort of thing. So we were talking about landscaping. And you can see the series of plants that are there are good-sized evergreen plants. And we have an extensive tree planting program, and the species list is listed on this plan, what have you, with obviously, with our focus being the multifamily project to the west and northwest.
What do you mean by good size?
Sure. Let's take a look at the proposed plant sizes. So our evergreen trees include white firs and green giant arborvitae, balsam fir, and red spruce. And the planting, the proposed planting height for those varies anywhere from 12 to 14 feet for a couple of the species, to 10 to 12 feet at planting. So this is a 40-scale plan. It looks like a 20-foot-on-center spacing is what you're looking at there, along the property line.
Just a quick question. What's the elevation change on the North Andover building in
So it's approximately elevation 140 at the base of the building, and then there's a bit of a drop-off. And then we're, and then we come back up into our loading area. So there's a swale-like feature in between the property. So, you know, eye to eye, if you're standing at the building, you're almost eye level, if you will, as if you were standing in front of the loading dock.
So the condos are not higher?
It is higher than our property today, but we are raising, we are raising our site in order to have the ability to separate our stormwater system from the high-grund water.
I mean, John, I think I know where you're kind of going with that. If one's higher than the other, what's on the roof and what do you say?
Yeah.
Exactly. And whether or not you have enough screening with respect to the plant heights, right?
Yeah.
You talked, one of the things that was really helpful before, I think, was Avalon, and even with Royal Crest as well, we had asked, or they had provided images from one, you know, from the abutters to the building with the actual screen, so you could get a picture of what that looked like and any elevation changes. Is that something we could talk about here as well?
Yeah, we can do that, sort of perspective views.
Mm-hmm. That'd be great.
So that takes a long time to prepare, so we often ask, we want to make sure we're on the same page with you as far as where we want to, so we won't want to show them from. So if I'm hearing you right, maybe standing in front, if you were standing in front of the condo building, looking at us?
So I would say, standing in front of the condo building at maybe the top story of the condo building, right? Like if you're looking out your window on the, I'm not sure how tall the condo building is, but let's say whatever the top flight is, like third floor or whatever is, looking out. And then, you said there was a single-family house, if we could do from there as well, on the other side?
Is it in Middleton's side?
I know, but, I mean, we're trying to just take the whole project as it is, just to get the sense.
I'm trying to remember, the multifamily, did that have balconies or anything like that we'd need to consider? I don't remember how high it was either. I'm just wondering if that needs to be something we can, or should consider, Eton?
Yeah, I don't remember. I mean, we'll do it, I mean, whether it's a balcony or whether their windows are open, we'll do it. It should have the same perspective, I would think, right?
Shouldn't there be a view from 114, looking at the site?
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, where on 114 now? I mean, it's kind of multiple.
I mean, I would do a view from 114, so you can have a picture of the condos in relation to the North Andover.
So like, 114 driving by the condos?
Yeah.
Any particular spot here? A couple of the buildings next door.
Yeah, I would say to the right, yeah, exactly. So you can get, yeah, so you can get a vantage point.
This is their parking, one of their parking areas here?
Mm-hmm.
Are you going to show us profiles of the building?
That's in the architectural plans that were submitted. Yep. So with that, a quick overview, would you like me to just highlight some of the, some of the main comments that were made and how we addressed them for the peer review consultant?
Sure. And then if we could see just some of the architectural plans, just to give us a reminder of that.
Okay. So TEC was hired to take a look first at the zoning bylaw peer review, is the way they described it. They asked us to make sure that our parking table on our plan was consistent with Attorney Mann's written narrative. So I didn't understand their comment at first, but now, after having reviewed the file completely, it looks like we have to update our table to make, we have some discrepancies between our plan and the written words. So as I mentioned before, the uses will include some R and D, some office, and then associated storage space for those uses.
So we don't need like the blow for blow for each comment? Sorry. What I think would be helpful is what change, I thought you meant more comments made by the abutters. So any changes, like big changes you've made to the plan that you haven't discussed with us, and then just some views of the architecture. So we got, you added the fence, we have, and we've got the tree plantings. We now know about the uses. This stuff with the, with TEC, you guys will figure that out, and eventually, either they'll say, yes, we're satisfied, or no, we're not satisfied. If they're not satisfied, then we need to have a further discussion. If they're satisfied, we'll review it and make sure. But we don't need to go through all of those.
Okay. All right. So I'll just focus on changes to the plans that I've already kind of gone through, so that you can understand what we changed. I mentioned the concrete pads in front of the loading docks. So they were squared off at one time, and some of the concrete was into the driveway, let's say, of a vehicle driving through. And TEC thought it would be better if we provided clearly at least 25 feet of pavement along a driveway, so that people weren't confused as they were driving around. So we chamfered In a couple of spots, I'll characterize that as relatively minor. Just look, quickly scanning the zoning items here, there were questions regarding the abutting property and how close we were to their septic system and private well. We were able to respond and added those elements to the plan, and it's pretty far away from anything that we're proposing. We've added, since the initial submittal, a physical plan for erosion and sediment control, and for construction phasing there towards the end of the plan set. Normally, we have just a narrative that's contained in the stormwater report, but we added physical plans to help someone understand, sort of a separate sheet to make it simple, to see where erosion and sediment control is being proposed and how the project would be phased. And that was pretty much it on the zoning side for changes to the plans. The other letter was more extensive, and it had to do with a review of our stormwater management report as it relates to the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook, industry standards, and best management practices. So one of the things that TEC asked us to do, and we added to the, to the response, was physical plans that show turning and truck-turning movements for various fire and other safety vehicles, and then a series of trucks, varying in size from box trucks to larger trucks, to, the largest truck that we analyzed was a tractor-trailer. So we have physical truck-turning movement plans for all of those things, and we did that to prove that we have adequate space the way we've laid out the building. We've added traffic signage, internal traffic signage. We have various locations where our stormwater management area is overflow, and we have riprap protection to prevent scouring. They asked us to provide sizing detail. We had done that, but not included it in the report, so we provided that information for them. They asked us to slide the septic system away from the stormwater management area a little bit, to make sure that we were at least 50 feet away from the predicted 100-year water level, which we, so we slid the septic system. They asked questions about that critical area that I mentioned, which is the tributary to the public water supply. They quickly figured out, as we did early on, that the GIS information that the state has doesn't quite match up with reality. And we explained how we had Mr. Bruce Bauch, who's a senior hydrogeologist from DEP, come out and verify that. And we have documentation for Mr. Bauch, which shows us exactly where the tributary begins. I mentioned that there are some stricter guidelines for stormwater when you're discharging to a critical area like the tributary, which is commonly referred to as a Zone A. And so we have that stormwater management area out in the front of the project. We had provided some pretreatment, but TEC asked us to bump that up, so we added a second pretreatment device. It's, they're all open. It's two four bays. We mentioned them before. We had one before, and now we have two.
So, John, did you want to see the actual architectural plans, or do you want to see renderings, or both?
Whatever.
Well, we got, so there's nothing in this packet, but if you go back to the November 1st packet, there's, there's, there's both. I don't know if any of, what's changed.
I'm just trying to get a sense of the look and feel, what it is and what it's composed up, I mean.
Sure. We don't have large-scale copies, but I know in the file, Jean, has electronic copies of the architecturals?
Yes, yes. If you go to the November 1st packet, Exhibit F is the, I think, what we should just look at.
So, Mr. Chairman, the remainder of the comments had to do with the stormwater report, and they're very technical in nature.
Yep. So we don't, as long as they get satisfied, that's going to be the key. And we'll, we'll review the actual, but we don't need to go through it right now.
Okay.
We have the reports. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's look at these.
What meeting?
2022.
Oh, I forgot.
Towards the bottom. And the application, and then Exhibit F. Has anything about this significantly changed?
The answer is no. That's the entrance, so you're coming into the project. Looking in to the U-shaped parking field in between, in between that U shape in the building. And then you can see the left and right-hand turns.
What is the height of the building again? 35? 37 or 80? It's under 32 feet and 38 feet, something like that.
We know that in the I-1 zoning district, the maximum height is 55 feet. We're much less than that, I know. Yeah, I know in our zoning table, we wrote "less than," but we can get that information for you. I think it's somewhere between, it's less than 35 feet, I believe.
It says on, in Exhibit, it says 3811 in, in the architectural plans, baylight.pdf. Says 3811, I believe.
It's right, yeah, it's Exhibit E. Is that correct?
I believe so.
Here it is, Chris.
Yeah.
I knew it was there. I was far below what the, I was far below the entitlement, but it was about 38 feet. And nothing has changed to date with regard to those renderings?
Okay.
What's the material of the building?
It's going to be a metal, metal building.
Okay.
But not with the, not the standard, you know, metal building. It's going to have those panels, the larger panels. Basically, architectural metal building. I don't know if that's an oxymoron, but...
It looks like the roof is slightly sloped.
It is slightly sloped.
And there won't be anything on the roof other than the roof? No utilities or anything?
Exactly. We're not proposing to put any of the systems on the roof.
And they did a sweat path analysis, is that right?
They did. They included it. So the revised plan, as well as the responses to the peer review, have been sent to the fire prevention officer at our fire department. It appears most of the conversations related to fire have been with Middleton, as opposed to with our fire department.
Just that middle, that middle area looks a little tight, potentially. Let's make sure they test that.
So the short answer is yes, Jean. Other than the TRC, we haven't had direct discussions with North Andover Fire. Only, I guess the only reason was because the fire protection system was going to be in the building on the Middleton side, and so we wanted to make sure that Middleton Fire felt comfortable. I'm happy to reach out to the chief and have a sit-down with him as well.
Yeah. So not only with the, not only with the fire suppression, but we need something. So what I'm thinking is that, that U-shaped area right there, if there's a fire in that building, the truck needs to be able to go in and also come out. So they need to make sure that they do a sweat path analysis, that they can get in and around.
That's 400 feet long, so there's certain code related to the distance where they'd have to back up from.
Right.
I think he sent that to the fire marshal's office, the state office, to get clarification on. But also the fire connections outside the buildings, response calls, like who's responding?
Right. Where the alarms are going to go.
He had those questions in TRC. He still has those questions. He indicated he's going to reach out to Middleton and have a conversation with them, but you may want to offer to meet with them as well.
Yeah. So I'll, I'll reach out to the chief directly and see what's setting up a meeting.
Lieutenant Kilcoyne is the prevention officer who's reviewing the plans. Yeah. So as far as department review, I'd say that is significantly all standing still.
Okay. All right, Jean, so what's, what's next?
So the traffic obviously meets the initial. As you can see, for the most part, site plan, the stormwater, and the zoning bylaw, they're all surmountable. I I would guess within the next round, they will be either recommendations to condition something or no response needed for those three. But traffic is still needs to be reviewed.
Okay, and let's wait on calling in the traffic engineer until we actually get the reports.
And the same peer reviewer is doing all of those on this, which is very helpful. And they're also doing it for Middleton.
Okay, and yeah, if you don't mind, and reaching out to the person who had been reaching out about meetings, just to make sure that they're aware. Because we did have a bunch of people here the first time. I just want to make sure that, I mean, as these things happen, we're continues to leak out. But if if we can just reach out, just to let them know we're still discussing.
We may have someone here.
Okay. Okay, well, I'll ask, is there any public comment? Does anyone wish to make any public comment that is here or if we've received anything, Jean, online?
We've not received anything online.
Okay, all right. All right, so if there's no further comments, we'll continue until June twentieth?
Twenty.
Anything?
Do you think that's going to be okay with getting comments back and working?
We can absolutely come in in June 20th and give you an update, but my guess is if we continue to the July meeting, we'll have a full round of the traffic. And Peter will be able, Peter Ellison, I apologize from TEC, will be able to respond to our Scott Thornton from Vannes. And I should be able to have a back and forth.
July 11th?
It's fine.
How many, do we have two meetings in July?
You go with July. We do.
Okay, that's fine.
Perfect, thank you.
July 11th. Okay, we'll see you then, July 11th.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time this evening.
Okay. Jean, do we have anyone here for 185 Grape Pond Road?
Chris, are you doing it? Okay.
Okay, so but I see any, you're going to be doing that? All right, so I'm going to hold that for a second. So Jean, you said we have someone here for 47 Bonnie Lane?
We do.
So why don't we do that? Let's do 47 Bonnie Lane and 59 Bonnie Lane and then we'll jump back to the 185 Grape Pond Road, okay? Since we have the people here for that. Forty-seven Bonnie Lane, should we do these individually or are they the same? They were discussing together separately?
They're sister issues, so they directly about each other and it's the same.
So why don't we talk about both of them? Okay, 47 Bonnie Lane, Lamine Kong unauthorized tree clearing within the watershed protesting district, non-disturbance buffer zone. Fifty-nine Bonnie Lane, Matthew Markzak, I'm probably butchering both of those names, so I apologize. Unauthorized tree clearing within the watershed protection district, non-disturbance buffer zone. Okay, Jean, tell us what's going on.
In fairness, I advised the homeowners, they didn't necessarily have to come tonight, but I advised them after the next conservation meeting, the subsequent planning board meeting, they would their attendance would be required. So in late April, a resident reported tree cutting along the lake at 47 Bonnie Lane. Amy Maxner and I met with the homeowner at the site on May 2nd. The homeowner communicated that she had recently purchased the house and was not aware of the watershed bylaw and/or wetlands regulations. She was not yet living in the house, having seen recently cut trees that she thought it was okay to remove trees. The pictures in the enforcement order included in the packet depict the extent of the cutting. The homeowner has engaged with Williams &amp; Sparages and a qualified arborist to perform the task stated in the enforcement order. Erosion controls have been installed on this property. I would say 59 Bonnie Lane is a little bit behind that. I would assume they're going to engage with Williams &amp; Sparage. I'm sorry, they have engaged with Williams &amp; Sparages. They haven't engaged with an arborist yet. And so they're going to be before conservation on the 14th. And the things that are due on the 14th are listed in the memo. Essentially, they need to delineate the wetlands, do a survey, identify the number of trees, the size of the trees. They've actually asked for an appraisal of the trees. So what the cost to replace these trees, and they were very large mature trees.
Jean, can you show some of the photos?
Yep, as soon as I get to this. So the calibers varied pretty significantly. What was somewhat surprising, and I trust the contractor did this, but the tree contractor.
The tree contractor who did the?
Who did the cutting, what we found was as Amy walked and taking pictures of these stumps that we'll see in a second, some were covered in leaves and debris and so the extent was more than you could visually see until we walked the property. And so a replanting plan is due and a report from that arborist to try to assess the appraised value. And the replanting restoration plan, again, is due to be presented at the 14th. And once conservation witnesses those, I think we'll have more information on the 20th to present that same plan to you. And we'll have input for conservation.
And just a couple of questions. So 59 Bonnie Lane, was that also recently purchased or was that something that the person was already living there?
It was somewhat recently purchased, not as recent. However, what I failed to mention is when Amy and I visited the site, that's when we saw the trees were just lying in the backyard there. And that kind of speaks to the homeowner saying, other people got trees, like I just didn't know we couldn't do that. It was the director butter and those trees were still visible and lying.
And so these are places that have, I'm just trying to set the con of the where, why we're here in terms of the planning board. So these are watershed special permits, right?
They would have required it, so.
To do the cutting.
To do the cutting. So vegetation removal is not allowed within the within 100 feet, which is the non-disturbance, without a special permit.
Okay, and conservation?
Conservation as well.
As well, okay.
So a lot of these trees would be this big around or perhaps bigger. They are really fully mature trees. And the purpose of this photo is to show there's there's about six shoreline Bonnie Lane houses in that frame. And you can see two of them. The ones you can't see have the normal tree cover. The one to our left is 47, which had the most severe and initial clear cutting. And the one to our right is 59 that followed after 47. There aren't as many trees cut, but even at 459, there's probably a dozen that are down.
Well, I mean, the thing, like, I'm looking at a Zillow picture of the listing. It's a beautiful area, beautiful house, but like, I'll show you, I'll show you. I mean, the trees are all there and blocking the view, obviously would be a beautiful.
And if you look at if you look at this view to our left of the house circled, you can see it's solid trees.
Right.
That's what it used to look like before the clear cutting.
Do we, so, and I can certainly under.
Could you put up the other photos as well?
I can understand a homeowner not necessarily being aware, especially if they see other trees being cut down. Though I do think they definitely have the responsibility to check. But I also have significant problems with whoever the company is that's doing this, so I'd like to know who that is. Because they should absolutely know better. And whoever was selling these houses should absolutely have told the buyers and whoever the real estate agent should have said, you cannot do these things. I mean, when you're passing papers, there should have been deed restrictions and things like that. So this information, I can I can understand and believe that maybe the new buyers were not aware, should have been aware, should have checked. But at the same time, there's a whole group of people that should have been making these things known. And that really frustrates and angers me that the people, the people working down there on these really nice, beautiful, expensive houses in a really important and vulnerable part of town, all right on the water, should know better. And there should be a way that we can also hold them accountable. If we're holding the homeowners accountable for replanting, great, that's part of the process. But making sure this doesn't happen should also be part of the process. And I'd like to talk about how we do that.
I definitely want to talk about that. I think one of the complications, and Jean, you may know more about this than than I do, but I thought I heard from Amy Conservation that the landscaper was from out of town. And I don't know if I heard correctly, but possibly Lynn. But whether it's Lynn or not, some towns away, which raises the question in my mind, if if you're looking for people to do landscaping, I mean, wouldn't you normally call people, you know, in, you know, maybe not in North Andover, but would you start with a town that far away? And if not, how do you get to that? How do you end up? In other words, I'm wondering, were there local landscapers who said, no, we won't do it? And if so, that raises another question, right?
Yeah, I mean, I would be nice to ask, do we know? I guess we could ask, I mean, I'd like to know from if the owners of 47 could kind of, if they'd be willing to let us know. And they hear you guys don't have any obligation to, or 59 don't have any obligation to come forward. But we'd like to know kind of where that came from. I mean, is it someone that they knew from where they moved from before? Is it someone that was recommended where it came from? And if we know who those people are, to talk to them.
We do know the tree company.
Yeah.
And I asked Amy if Conservation has any ability to hold them accountable. That was before it even got to Conservation Commission. And she's like, yeah, we can. So I just have to get an update as to what their stance was on that. As far as the Realtor, I don't know if there was a seller's agent, the end of buyer's agent.
We can find that out pretty easily.
Yeah, so.
I mean.
But to your to your earlier point, Etan, regardless of where the company was from, I would like to talk about what the options are for accountability, not only with the homeowner, but with the companies. And I also think you raise a very good question about the Realtor.
Trying to look.
And, you know, let's take a more common example. I mean, there's not a lot of houses that immediately border the water supply, the lake. But let's look at all the rest of the houses in town. This is a bit of an analogy. It's not the same thing. But let's say setback or curb cuts. And a homeowner, maybe a new homeowner, wants to build something on their property or, you know, throw in another driveway. And let's say they didn't know these rules and they went ahead and did it. We would say undo it, right? And one of my concerns is, you know, these are fully mature trees that have an important value to every person in town in protecting the drinking water supply. And I I am troubled by the notion of, you know, replacing fully mature trees with, you know, a five-foot sapling. That's not good enough.
Point, no, that's, in my mind, that's the point, that any reforestation plan has to be pretty robust and pretty aggressive. And it's not just, yes, small things that may never get there except for 50 years and then you're not even sure.
And then part of the dilemma here is that a very large tree obviously requires significant digging to plant it. And that's further disturbing the lakeshore, right? And that's not good. But to me, the resolution of that is to do it with fully qualified professionals who can do that type of substantial planting safely with respect to the shoreline.
So why don't we hear from our professional? You have the floor, Sarah.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, okay.
All right, okay, thanks. For the record, Chris Spurra, just from the Engineering and Survey Office of Williams &amp; Sparages. So we were first.
Can I interrupt you? I apologize for having to ask this, but where's your firm located?
So we're in Middleton, Middleton, Massachusetts, right on 114.
Great, thank you.
Yep, thank you. So the folks, the homeowners from 47 Bonnie Lane reached out to us first after they received an enforcement order from Amy Maxner and the Conservation Commission. That was when we first found out about this project. And so I contacted Amy to find out what happened and to get an idea of what we're going to need to do to to remedy this. So we prepared a proposal. The owners for 47 Bonnie Lane accepted our proposal, which included all the things that that you heard Jean mention a few minutes ago. And shortly thereafter, we also were reached out to by the by the neighbor at 59. And because we were going to be doing the work for 47, they hired us to do the work for them as well. So Thorson Akerle, one of our wetland scientists from our office, has already gone out. He's flagged the wetland. The survey work was scheduled right away. We do have a little bit of a backlog, but we were out there and completed the field work yesterday on both properties. So the field work has been completed. And now it's in the office and someone's been assigned to draw up the existing conditions. I think I heard Jean mention the erosion control for 47 Bonnie Lane, which was required by the enforcement order from the Conservation Commission, has been installed. Thorson Akerle from our office identified where it should go and we know that that's been installed. The owners of 47 Bonnie Lane, it took them about two weeks to find an arborist who was felt comfortable trying to put a price tag on on the trees that were taken down. We we work with arborists from time to time and gave them a list of qualified folks that we work with. And they did secure the services of a gentleman. I don't have his name handy, but he is a couple of weeks out from from being able to to help them. But that's in the works. And I don't have 100% confirmation, but I heard secondhand, I haven't confirmed it. And I believe the the owners for 59 Bonnie Lane, I think they're going to hire the same arborist. And so we'll be sort of doing this together, you know, simultaneously. And as soon as we have these plans put together, you know, as you know, we're supposed to report to the commission on the 14th. Thor is in, you know, constant contact with Amy Maxner. I don't know if we're going to be ready to present on the 14th, but we're, we just started working on the plans today. So that's that's what we know right now.
Is your proposal also responsive to the Conservation Commission to do evaluation of the trees that were cut?
Yes.
And can you describe to us how you do that valuation? I mean, just in general terms. I mean, the reason I'm asking is this. I think what the Conservation Commission meant, but I'd be interested to hear your interpretation, is not just how much a lumber mill would pay for the bored feet. I don't think that's the valuation they were looking for.
Right, so I'm not an expert in our our office. We are not experts in determining that. That's why we hired or the homeowners have hired an arborist to help them help them with that. So I can't I can't answer your question tonight.
Well, not as an expert. I take your point and thank you for being candid about that. But have you done this work with arborists in the past? And can you give us just a general description of how that valuation would be done?
So not not exactly. We've worked with arborists because we had some, you know, very important trees, trees that were very important to cities and towns, very near public way, partly on private property, partly on public property. And, you know, we've come up with plans to protect trees and things like that, but I haven't been involved in coming up with a monetary value. Some of the towns, cities and towns that we work in have a sort of a tree replacement policy. Towns like, you know, off the top of my head, Linfield and Sudbury and Boxford, I believe, where, you know, based on how many trees, how big they were, you know, you sort of come up with a replacement amount.
You and your firm are keenly aware that this is not just a wetland. It's the primary and sole source of drinking water for all 28,000 people in this town. You're you're aware of that and that it's a, you know, an open drinking water supply?
So it's very familiar with it. It's shocking that something like this could happen. We're very familiar with how important public surface water supplies are. And that's one of the very first things that we check when we go to work on a project anywhere in the Commonwealth, so.
Great.
Yeah, we do.
Well, I also, I mean, obviously, I'm highly disturbed by this.
So I had firsthand discussions with the owner.
I also want to say, I think the homeowners are here.
They are not here tonight.
Oh, they're not?
No, no, you're, the folks in the back are here for Grape Pond Road.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Great, okay.
You look just like, you look just like the. I'm sorry, I apologize.
I do nonetheless, I do nonetheless, even though I'm deeply concerned about this, I want to, I want to say thanks to the homeowners for hiring an experienced and qualified firm quickly in response to the order from Conservation. So, you know, initial corrective steps appear to be heading in the right direction. But of course, we're going to see what the plan is before drawing a conclusion. But it is encouraging to see this first step.
Jean, what, so Jean, what's next? So they go before Conservation. Conservation's going to issue some orders and then they'll come back to us for for what?
That that was the fourteenth, and I thought they'd come back and present that same plan to you to make sure that you're comfortable with what they're comfortable with. If they were, they might ask them to tweak it for whatever reason. Their standard is a two-to-one replacement, but having been this egregious, they didn't commit to that at this point.
Right, but what, what, what do we have to, do we have to approve a permit? Do we have, what, what, what do we have to, I mean, they're in violation of.
You could require an after-the-fact filing for a watershed special permit?
That's right, that's what I want.
And therefore detail all the findings of facts and approve the plan. But honestly, the, the process with Conservation is going to be a two, three-year effort
Right.
of monitoring it and assuring survivability.
I mean, I can, so I, I could tell you, I haven't, I haven't litigated any tree cases, but I've had people come to me in the past about tree cases where someone cut down a tree on someone else's property. And so people know it's one of the only things in Massachusetts that is what's called strict liability. Doesn't matter the reason you do it, mistake, intent. If you cut down somebody else's tree, you're responsible for the value of it, no matter what. And I can tell you, the costs are extreme, very, very high. Now, there are different ways to calculate it based on height and age and width and things like that, but well into the five figures for, per tree. So it's very expensive. Again, depending on the type and the size and location and the skill needed to replicate and things like that. But, so, we don't have that exact situation here, but it's, a low number would not, we're not looking to punish, but I, it's, it's got to be legit based on, legitimate based on what these types of trees would cost. And we can, I think there is a good way to get, get.
Yeah, and I think if we, if we look at the, the immediately adjacent shorelines, plus shorelines where there are residences elsewhere in the lake, there's ample examples, including the house immediately next to it, that show what the condition of the shoreline was. And my view is, it should be restored. It's not about punishment, it's about restoring the protection for the asset.
Yep.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I was just going to ask quick, because I don't, and it, it wasn't clear to me, and you might have said this, so excuse the, the, the repeating of a question. So, so in aggregate between the two lots, how many trees were actually cut down?
So I don't have that information, but the plan will speak for itself. One of the luxuries that we have in this case is that the stumps were not removed. And so we'll be able to ascertain exactly how many trees and how big they were where they were cut.
So the enforcement order estimated 20 for forty-seven? And. Excess of 10 freshly cut.
So 30 trees, more or less?
So when we do come back here, I would like, if, if you could talk to the homeowners about providing us information about. They're, they're, I'd like to know from forty-seven what their Realtors told them and where they got the information for the, for the company that did it. And same, and same with fifty-nine. Just, we need to fix the situation, as Peter said, we need to be remediated. So that's going to be one issue, but I want to make sure that something like this doesn't happen again. So I want to, one, talk to these people, but also figure out where the holes are and if there's anything we can do about that. I don't know what there is, but I'd at least like to figure out the chain of how this could have happened so we can work on making sure it doesn't happen.
So I would recommend also filing for an after-the-fact watershed special permit, because that would then notice the neighborhood.
Yep.
To make sure they're all aware of the process.
Okay, that sounds good.
And that will take a month to get before you. And so maybe the next time before you, the hearing could open on July 11th.
Okay, let's see where we're at with.
And I think Chris will be more in position to present a replant plan by then.
Okay, that sounds like a plan. So thank you for taking the brunt of, of that for your clients.
That's okay. All I can tell you, I know for forty-seven, because I, I dealt with them personally, the owner who was out of town and hadn't actually even, I don't think, I don't think she had seen the property very much before she purchased it, was in tears when she found out what happened and what, what the, you know, what the effect was, so.
Is that because maybe the Realtor got the landscaper on their behalf?
Yeah, I took a lot of good notes. So I'll, we'll go back and, and to speak with them and find out, find out if we can get some answers for you.
Okay, okay, thank you very much.
Who was the Realtor?
I'll have to figure that out, I was looking at the listing. It looks like it was the buyer's Realtor? I assume the buyer we're talking about. Looks like bought with Peter Scanlon Caldwell Banker Realty Belmont.
That was the seller.
That's the seller?
I think so.
Listed by Cynthia Bogosian, CB Luxury.
Looking through, I saw one was a North Andover Realtor.
Okay, so I'm not sure.
If my, if my internet sleuthing was right, so.
I, I'm just looking on Zillow, so I'll have to go back and look, I'm not sure. We'll try to find that out. If anyone actually discovers that, just forward that information onto Gene. I'm not sure. Okay, all right, let's do 185 Great Pond Road. I didn't realize they were here, I would have done them first.
Chris, thanks for your work on this.
My pleasure.
185 Great Pond Road, Tammy Wolfock and Hans H. Kim, application for watershed special permit under Article Four, Part Five, and Article Ten, Section 195, 10.7 zoning by law to authorize installation of an in-ground swimming pool and paver patio within the non-discharge buffer zone in the watershed protection district properties located in the R3 zoning district.
Okay.
All right, so the zoning by law stipulates that swimming pools shall have a minimum 10-foot setback from side and rear lot lines and be located no nearer the street than the building line of the dwelling. And so as you can see, the lot is 4.2 acres, but the pool is located immediately adjacent to the house because it cannot be placed between the front building line and Great Pond Road. The owner originally wanted to put it there, and this has been the location brought forward.
I'm sorry, does this, so does the location meet the bylaw?
Yep, it does now.
Okay.
Because it's been moved to the side of the house, and it's more than 10 feet off the side and rear setback.
Okay, so it doesn't need a variance of any kind?
The proposed patio and pool are located to the side and rear of the dwelling and just outside the 100-foot non-disturbance zone. The closest point of the proposed patio surrounding the pool is approximately 113 feet from the edge of a wetland located to the rear of the existing house. The proposed limit of disturbance is greater than 100 feet from the wetland resource area. Therefore, it's not before the Conservation Commission. The project is located within the non-discharge buffer zone in which any surface or subsurface discharge of stormwater is only allowed after a special permit granted by the planning board. The application was filed April 18th, and the stormwater peer review has been completed. All concerns have been addressed and revised. Site plan and operations, maintenance plan have been submitted. A draft decision has been prepared for your consideration per the request of the Conservation Administrator. A construction sequence plan or narrative which details how access materials will be kept outside the 100-foot non-disturbed buffer zone has, has been conditioned in the draft decision.
So this is right across from the entrance to Fox Hill Road, I think, right?
Just about, yep.
So coming down the hill from the old center?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Before you get to the intersection with Great Pond and Pleasant. And it's a setback, as you can see, quite a ways. You know where this, Gene, isn't this where there's the old abandoned railroad track?
Just north of the property line?
Yes.
Has it?
You know, the railroad that goes over the stone arch by Stevie's Pond? And what are those condos called by Stevie's?
Mill Pond?
Mill Pond.
Mill Pond.
To the back of Stevens Pond.
All, all along the back of Stevens Pond crosses Pleasant, and then.
I know, I know this house.
Where crosses Great Pond, that's where this house is.
I like this house. It's a very nice, modern design, which is neither here nor there, but I really like this house.
This is one of the houses where we, we let them do a, a, where construction road, so there's two houses, one closer to the street, one further back, or is it further up from there?
I think that was.
It was like, I think when Teddy Leland divided his property.
That's further up.
Okay.
That's further up. This one's closer to the old center.
Okay.
Yeah, this is, this is pretty close to the old center.
Teddy Leland's stuff is up here.
Yeah, okay.
See Fox Hill, it's right across, it's setback.
You probably recognize the house. So, good, a filing before you did the work, that's, we like that. Okay, Gene, any issues, concerns?
No.
Water testing looks good?
Water quality looked good. The peer review comments were minor in nature. Put erosion control around the stockpiling location, riprap construction entrance, minor things that were all addressed in the first revision.
Okay. Do we have any public comments? Do we have any public comment that came in via email?
So I have a comment.
Please.
So my comment is that, you know, with this, we, we like to know how far is it from the lake, which, as you've heard, is our drinking water supply. And we're pretty sensitive about it. And so it's close. But the point I'd like to make is, it's even closer to a very small holding pond that a stream drains into, and from that holding pond, it goes straight into the lake. So it's actually closer to the lake than the distance to the lake because it's closer to that small holding pond. And once, once anything drains into the holding pond, boop, right into the lake. It's not slowly percolating through the soil. And that small holding pond is just to the east, northeast of this house. Do you, are, are you familiar enough with the topography?
I am, can I, can I just draw a shape on the, I think I know what you're describing.
Yeah, sure. And tell us again where north is on your map?
Sure, so north is pointing to the upper left side.
Oh, got it, got it. You do like that with all of your maps.
We, I prefer that where north is pointing up, somewhere up, instead of down. So if I could just draw a shape real quick, because I was reviewing this as I was preparing tonight.
So since it's hard to see the scale, just remind us, where's Great Pond Road?
So this is that Great Pond Road.
Great, thank you.
And off in the distance here, there's, I'm going to draw it at a smaller size. There's a body of water and that does something like this. And then the main reservoir, this is the.
Lake.
The, the lake. This is the main lake.
Yep.
And I think this might be what you're describing.
No, it is not.
It has tail.
It is not.
Okay.
The body of water to the left is Stevens Pond.
Okay.
And you've correctly described the lake. If you go in a direction of, and I mean, if we, if we had a map, I mean, even a Google map, we could do this.
Keep pulling up the GIS.
Yeah, this wetland is tributary. This is up, further up on the slope you're describing, Mr. Boynton, right?
So it is to the, basically to the east, there's a tributary, a stream. But the point I'm trying to make is the stream drains into a small, ah, can you expand that? Let's just get it on here, because otherwise I'm describing a map.
Sure.
Which is very entertaining to me, but probably not to you.
So that was that boot I was describing down there, but you're describing something different.
That's the end of the lake, which we call the hatch.
Yep.
That's what we call that cove. It drains into Stevens Pond, and that's not what I'm talking about. Okay, right there.
I can see it.
See to the east, okay, there you go. So you can see that the property is pretty close to the lake, and that's normally what, you know, we all think of. But in this case, the property is much closer to that, can you put your cursor by that little, right there? And that little, it's not even a pond, it's a, it's a drainage puddle. That is fed by that stream that extends to the right. But my concern is, that small drainage pool then drains in another stream right underneath Great Pond Road, directly into the lake, right there. And so if any drainage from this property goes in that direction, it in effect gets to the lake. This accelerates the movement of any drainage into the lake because once it gets to that, that pool, that drainage pool where Gene's cursor is, it no longer has to slowly seep through the ground. It has an accelerated path via a drainage stream underneath Great Pond, right into the lake. And so this is an example of a property that's close to the lake, like many properties, where care is needed. And in addition, it's even closer to a small pool that drains much faster into the lake. And I think you need to be aware of that, okay? With your designs.
And where did we have the stormwater sending, any?
So what we proposed to do, to provide mitigation around the patio area, was to construct on two sides, the long side, which would be the east side.
Okay, that's the side closest to this drainage pool.
That's right, and the south side, a stone-filled infiltration trench. That's one foot wide by two foot deep, right along the edge of the patio. And the intent there is to capture runoff from the impervious surface. So you can see on my colored plan, the house is in brown and the pool is that blue rectangle. It's relative, you know, it's 18, 14 by 30, and then the, and then the patio that surrounds it, and then. In an L shape, that's the proposed infiltration trench.
And Gene, in your map here, if you slide the map down.
Are you on GIS, the plan?
The plan, yeah. No, the other way. Is this showing the lake shore, or does it not go that far?
Does not.
It does not go that far. I know, you know, scaling it from the regional maps, the proposed activity is about 660 feet from the shore. That's measured from Mass Mapper.
Right, and so the distance to that pool of water is probably about 400.
It's definitely closer than, than that other number shore.
So is that something that our consultant, did we have stormwater consultant for this? Or did you?
Yep, should we be there?
Would that be something that they could look at, just that particular? Or is that worthwhile, is that needed?
You can, but the design proposed could handle the infiltration caused by the structure.
And, and if it does, then, then I think we're fine. I just, you know, I, I know I'm belaboring the point here a little bit. My point is this, it's close to the lake, so we're taking all these precautions. My point is, it's closer to the lake than it appears because of that pool.
So, agreed, and I think you're right. My question more is, does this satisfy that heightened standard? If so, great. If, if we're not sure, is there anything else we could do? Or is there any condition that we could add to satisfy that?
What I'm hearing from Gene is that the design is capable of handling this runoff. And if it's capable, then you can argue, well, it doesn't matter how close that other pool is.
Yeah, I was just going to add, if it was only the pool and not a stream to the pool, if just the house happened to be located next to that pond, 325 feet and greater, they wouldn't even be before you. I understand in this scenario, there's a stream to it. But the, the regulations for this age lot would be 325 feet. Anything greater than that, they wouldn't even be coming to you.
Right. So maybe the main objective here is the homeowners have heard this discussion. They know that they're actually closer to the lake than it appears, and they should be aware of it.
Can I ask, are there ever any, let's say the stormwater starts to not, doesn't work, right? Like, how would we know, get notice of that? So like, if, if, can we put in a condition that if there is excessive runoff or something like that, 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 that we should, the board, planning department should be notified? Just so like, if there's a failure in the system or something like that? Like, let's say it works great for the next 10 years, fantastic. But if there's a point when, either because we have excessive rainfall or something where it's not working, it would be good to have at least a condition that we're supposed to be notified. And that way we can just, hey, okay, go check out, just make sure, something like that. Would that, maybe that makes sense?
I like it.
Yeah.
It's, it's fine. The notification usually comes from the butter, when, when somebody's stormwater runs onto their property.
Right, but here, if it's going to the lake, I mean, I, I, again, we have.
The question is, how are you going to?
We may not be able, but we have the homeowner here, we're telling them, we put it in. It's just something to say, hey, if you ever see this not working, just let us know. It's not that it's a big deal, but we just need to know so we can deal with it, that's all.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I just think it's, it's a good thing for us to communicate now that they know, and go ahead and prove it, and everything looks good. But just, hey, if this isn't working right, just so you know, it's not only going to affect your neighbor, but it affects everybody, so just, you know, in addition to telling your neighbor, hey, make sure your sump pump is on, just give the town a call and say, hey, this is kind of going. Just give the town a call and say, hey, this is kinda going, you just may wanna check it out. So, let's add that as a notification, as a condition to the decision.
And I hope you have a chance to get out on the lake, but we're not gonna put that in as a requirement.
And no cutting trees.
Yes. Tell your neighbors. Uh, okay, can we get a motion to close the public hearing?
I, I just had a question for Gene. Given all of our discussion, are you satisfied that all the engineering and everything that's been done in our review is adequate here?
For this pool?
Yeah.
Yes. Yep, it, it's really close to a hundred, and the reason it is, is more related to zoning than anything else. They didn't wanna do that.
Just wanna make sure, in light of what Peter said.
Yep.
Are we getting the proper due diligence and the proper solution?
And for this scenario, because it's so close to the hundred, I would walk the erosion control with Amy Maxter and make sure she's satisfied. The construction entrance, the tracking pad, she'll be involved in this too, just to have another set of eyes on it.
Great, thank you.
I'll make a motion for this public hearing.
Uh, vote, Kelly?
Yeah.
Sean?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Peter?
Aye.
And I vote yes. Sean, you're official, right?
I'm official.
Okay, great. All right, five full members, awesome.
Motion was John is second, Peter?
Motion was John.
I was the second.
Second by Sean.
Okay.
Okay, so the public hearing is now closed.
Thank you very much.
Hold on, no, no, no. That, we just closed the public hearing, now we gotta vote on the decision. So, that means no more comments.
So, Gene, now that I'm quote-unquote official, I guess my name would go under Kelly's.
So, I add Sean to the letterhead.
What a catch.
Okay, so, could we get a motion to approve the special permit?
Uh, Gene?
Yeah?
I think we have two paragraph fives.
What page is it on, Peter?
Page five. After, paragraph five is prior to release of the bond, and then paragraph picks up again in paragraph five.
Yep.
So, we'll make, we'll renumber. We'll add a condition of notification of if there is excessive drainage or failure of the stormwater management system. Notify the town. And can we get a motion to approve as amended?
So, vote second?
Motion made in second. Kelly?
Yeah.
Sean?
Yes.
John?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
And I vote yes. So, that is approved as amended.
All right, thank you very much again.
All right. Enjoy, thank you. Thanks for sitting through all of that, I hope it was educational. All right.
So, I'm not keeping up well tonight. So, that motion was Peter, second by John?
Correct. Chris, do you have anything else? Okay. You're welcome, thank you. Okay, uh, discussion item, master planning implementation committee. So, we have a bi, biannual, so we switch to every, twice a year instead of quarterly. Really, the report just says, check the website. The master planning implementation committee's been doing a good job meeting, updating the website with things that have been done to, throughout the town, to advance the master plan. And in addition, members have, when there have been holes or gaps, so for instance, hey, there was, you know, some historical items that hadn't been touched, or some open space items, members have gone to the appropriate department and said, hey, did you know you're responsible for this? Or, hey, what's this, what's going on with these? Got an update, gotten the ball moving on certain things. So, I think the committee has worked very well in the three years it's been running. So, that'll continue with Sean on there, okay. Planning Board rules and regulations, I haven't gotten to frankly, in the last month or so. Updating, so I'll get on that, and then we'll talk with council and, and move forward.
So, a update to the, a butter notification issue?
That's, so, I have not, no, not yet, not yet. No updates one way or the other. Okay, can we get a, prove, a motion to approve the meeting minutes from May sixteenth?
Before we do that, should we do just a quick update on four hundred Great Pond, or not?
Uh, sure, if you want, yeah. Well, why don't we do the meeting minutes?
Okay, fine.
Motion to approve the meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor, Kelly?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
John?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
And I vote yes, sure. Tell us about four hundred Great Pond, what's going on?
So, we did a site meeting with people responding to the request for information, or request for quote-
Qualification.
Qualification. I think there were about five or six that showed up. It was a good turnout. And I think we're waiting for any questions, there's a deadline for that. And then, we have a committee selected to rate the qualifications, and there's a deadline, I think, near the end of June for that.
I think the twenty-second.
Yeah.
Well, they're due in the twenty-second. And then, usually takes a week or two, because you check references, and that, that's a little bit of a variable, how long it takes to get the reference.
Yep. So, it's going along? Seems to be pretty good?
Yep.
There's a little concern about getting some mowing done on the site, because it's, looks like a bad haircut. And D P W said they were gonna have somebody do that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Anybody else got anything to add?
Uh, actually, yes.
Okay.
Yes, I have something.
Yes.
A number of lake residents and Brooks School have noted concern about the extended period of time for unusually high water around the lake. This is related to four hundred Great Pond. And you recall that initially, there was quite a bit of confusion. D P W had written that they wanted to raise the level of the lake, but they subsequently explained that's not what they meant. What they meant was not have to prematurely drain the lake as a result of winter snow melt and spring rains, but rather preserve that temporary high level so that we had more water in the lake and it wouldn't get so low by the end of the summer. Well, this year, that temporary high water has not been very temporary. It's June, and it's still high. I have sent photos along to D P W, planning, conservation, and the town manager, showing locations where even as of this past weekend, the water was still high enough that it was going twenty or thirty, and in a few places, forty feet further up than the normal shoreline. And that means that it has inundated the trees and the tree root systems, not just with the trees that border the lake shore, but, you know, four, five, six rows of mature trees inland in many locations. And some of the lake residents and Brooks School specifically noted a massive oak tree that had fallen, a lakeside oak tree that had fallen into the lake on the shore of Half Mile Hill, several hundred yards north of the Edgewood boat racks. And it appears to be a perfectly healthy oak. I've rode over, I've seen it, I've seen photos. And the concern was, you know, it's not unusual for a shoreline tree to fall, typically they're diseased. But the concern was, is this sort of a harbinger of a larger die-off of shoreline trees because of the extended period of time with high water this spring? And D P W's aware, they're gonna send out their tree expert. But, you know, when we met with the town manager, we made the comment that-
Made that comment, yeah.
That if the water's gonna be high, we need an expert study of what the effects would be. And I have highlighted that.
Because I had the impression that D P W F's capability of ameliorating a problem like that. So, where have they been, and like?
Well, so one of the, I mean, I- Been out on the, on my kayak too, I've noticed it very high, more, more trees in the water. I talked to my son about it, like, how, like, sometimes you can see the trees and sometimes you, you can't because of the water level. But I think the, the question is, which is the natural, is this the natural way that it would have been, had we not been artificially lowering the lake? And how it should be, kinda going back to where it should be? Or is this too high, and, or is this because we've had a lot of rain and not a lot of high temperatures? And I don't know the answer to those.
This goes back to the discussion we had with the town manager before this was implemented. That those questions ought to be answered, not after something happens to the lake, but in advance. That we shouldn't be reacting to a significant problem. And it's not just shoreline trees falling down, it's, what effect would it have on protection to the lake if there were significant numbers of shoreline trees, not just the immediate, but going back several rows, that did die off because of extended root immersion? And also, what effect does this extended high water have on erosion to the shoreline? And what effect does that have to the water column with dissolved solids that would not normally be there, but would be there because of accelerated erosion? And all of this requires a technically competent assessment. And that we had discussed with the town manager, and I thought she made a commitment that if we were gonna face, I mean, you know, sustained high water, then the town would do that. Now, no one expects this to last forever, because they can drain the lake, but it's slow. I know earlier, they were trying to do that, but it was very slow. And I don't think this means that we can no longer do the goal. I, I like the idea of not prematurely draining the high water. But it seems to me that this is an example where, because of a lot of rain, the high water has lasted longer than normal. So, there are valid questions, and we need a way to answer those with technical competence.
Well, thank you for, for following up and continuing the discussion. I mean, again, it's a new issue, and it's good to keep our, your eyes on, our eyes on it, and keep talking about it, and keep evaluating.
I haven't gotten a response from my email to the town manager, but I, you know, have made the point. And I think the planning board ought to be aware of it. And then, just before we adjourn, we need to hold a spot to have a discussion of what we might do with landscapers and realtors to avoid future shoreline clearcutting, right? Let's not forget that important point.
Nope. Okay. Yeah, no, I mean, I, I think I will, I wanna, I wanna do that in the context of getting more information from that thing. So, we'll get information about what happened, and then after that, we'll have a discussion about what we can do.
Those are great questions, thanks for doing that.
Okay, can we get a, Gene, anything coming up that we need to know about? We good?
Yep.
Okay, awesome. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, Kelly?
Yeah.
Sean?
Yes.
John?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
I vote yes. Okay, we're good. That was an interesting-
That was an interesting...